All right, let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day and the blessings of the day. And for those of you gathered here tonight, thank you for their willingness to serve the city council, the mayor, the clerk. We pray that you would bless them with wisdom and insight as they address the challenges and opportunities that are in front of them. We pray that you would give them wisdom as they steward the resources of our city. Give them clarity and unity of purpose in your ways of peace, justice, and righteousness. Where there are differences of opinions, Lord, give them understanding and patience. Where there are obstacles, provide strength and determination. And encourage their hearts, keep them from discouragement, Lord, as they serve. Thank you. Now, we pray for our residents. We pray for those who are suffering and are grieving. We pray for the brokenhearted. We pray you'd be near to them. We pray for schools and businesses, for the leadership there. We pray that you would give them wisdom and a vision for leadership. We pray for our city employees, for our police, our fire, or rescue. And we pray you'd protect them and bless the work of their hands. And now we thank you for all the good gifts you give us. And the most important gift is the gift of your son, our Lord. And in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Well, that was great. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you take the roll call, please?
Mike Connell.
Here.
Randy Coffey. Mindy Galavie.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Paul Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Harrison Hammond.
Here.
All of the conference board except Councilmember Randy Coffey.
Then we look to the reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that the agenda... Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That's what I want, is approval of the agenda. Thank you, Steve.
I moved that the agenda be adopted as per it.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
That was a tie. Who did you pick?
Larry. That's who I heard.
Okay. Thank you.
And now we'll move to reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from December 2, 2021. Right with me.
Second.
Motion from Mike, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, as indicated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we'll move to preapproved reports and ask Larry and Mindy to present winners of the lighting contest.
Okay, before I actually start making the presentations, I just want to congratulate everybody that had lights on in the city. It was tough for the judges to make some decisions, but we had a great turnout once again this year with people having lit up their residence in a very festive way. So kudos to everyone, though we can't award everyone the winner. The judges that we had this year, we had Josh and Lindsay Bohard that were part of the winning group last year, Adam Walters and Madeline Slocum, as well as Kelly Graves and Deborah Graves. And then Mindy Galavie and her husband Tom, as well as myself and my wife Linda, were the judging corps for this year's activity. Before I get into those that actually won some money, we do have some honorable mentions that I'd like to point out. Joel and Carol Crane at 119 West First Street, home of Scott Johnson at 620 North Watkins, Laura Conaway and Rachel Fraser at 104 North Madison, and Jeremy and Kareem Laos at 105 East Potley Street. And the list could go on. We just couldn't name all of the honorable mentions that we'd like to recognize. Moving on to the actual winners this year. First off, in third place, Robert and Nicole Kittle of 322 Lamb Street.
Hello, Mr. Kittle.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Robert, I'm Larry. Congratulations.
Let's do a picture. Wait, wait, wait. Christmas tree. Oh, there it is. I'll put it for you.
Yes, it's very nice.
Very nice. Congrats.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Kittle, are you the one that has the truck with... at Halloween time that has the...
Yes.
...I love that. I do too. So thanks for doing that, too.
That truck's sitting at my parent... my mom's house, which during the Lind store almost got took out by the power lines when they fell over.
Oh, no.
It took out my other... I have a 48 Oldsmobile that got attacked.
Oh, yeah. Sorry to hear that. Gosh. Yes. Sorry, Larry, I just had to...
No, that's okay. Because we... that came up in conversations, and judges were talking about the lighting for Christmas and said how nice the Halloween display was as well.
Yeah.
It was.
We try to do as much as we can on both holidays.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. In second place, at 3201 West Britton, we had Jacob and Misty Miller. Apparently Jacob will be here a little later, I understand, according to Devin, so we'll hold on that. And then first place this year at 336 Oakwood Lane, our friend and Ratty Mauer.
Yay! He worked five weeks. I just hammered. He worked six.
She did with my back foot. Okay.
Oh, your butt must get closer.
I did what I had to do.
I love you, Ratty.
Oh, you're sweet. You deserve so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
What we can do is do the elbow thing. We can do a walkout. You can.
All right. Make sure you actually are best. I will. Okay?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Of course.
Dear people. Oh, my gosh. This is a look.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next in our preapproved reports is our 2020/21 city audit report. The auditor was not able to be here last minute because of illness. So our new treasurer, Megan, is stepping up.
So that's me. I was talking to Luke earlier this week, and while I was speaking to him, he said I have to leave. I have to go. Oops, I'm sorry. I'm in the way here.
Let's switch that out. There you go.
I'll pull it out for Megan, so you and I didn't become the co-hosts.
All right. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yep, perfect. He had to go pick up a child from daycare. So we talked a few times this week. He gave me a couple of talking points to go over the audit. I believe you all have the audit in your hands. He wanted to point out that the biggest thing to point out was he has an unmodified opinion this year, which means it's the best opinion we can have, and it means they're satisfied with the financials that they audited as they received them. There was a very short list of adjusting entries that I made, which is consistent with what's been made in past years. Accounts payable that cross years, standard things like that. The other item he pointed out is that our governmental funds increased our fund balance by about $20,000 for the year. And that's on net between the road funds, City Hall Fund, general fund. So while we may have dipped in the fund balance for a couple of those items, between all of them pooled together as governmental funds, we still were in the positive for the year. For the enterprise funds, which is the water and sewer, we increased our net position by about $232,000. Both of those things are highlighted on pages three and seven of the audit that you have in front of you. Having such a great year with the water and building that fund balance is what's really going to help us this coming year as we look to the water tower project. We'll be able to front most of the expense for the water tower project. I think I should do some cash flow analysis. And then it's my opinion right now that we won't need to go out for any kind of external funding, even if it means maybe the general fund alone, water until, like, part of funds are replaced. So those were the three key points that he gave me to talk to you guys about. He also wanted to let you know that he'd be happy to attend sometime in January. If you have more questions, if you have questions specifically, if you have a chance to review the audit, I'd be happy to send those back to you.
Counsel, feel free to ask Megan any questions. If you have, present any questions that she can either answer or seek the answers to. Okay, Megan, I guess we're done. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It will be my goal next year to have this done much sooner in the year. I don't like this last minute. I have till the 31st for some reports that are due, so this approval today will keep me busy the next two weeks.
You might just replace... There was something that was outstanding and delayed that they couldn't... the auditors couldn't move ahead and do until that.
The auditors of the main financials were waiting on the audit of our OCAB, the other post-employment benefit, not pension. So I think maybe we were on the back burner a little bit, waiting for that actuary report to come from the other firm. Next year, that is a supplemental audit. I'm not sure certain if supplemental is the right word, but it's a much briefer audit of the OCAB, so it'll be done much quicker. It was like a three to four week turnaround on that. So that will help me get everything else to the main auditors much quicker.
Thank you. We're now open to public comment. Anyone here for public comment? I guess we'll move on then. Hearing no public comment, two communications. Devin, do we have some?
None tonight.
No communications from Devin. I do have just a few things I'd like to touch base on as reports. And one is just to say what a wonderful 2021 Christmas fantasy event we experienced on Saturday. Thanks to everybody that was involved in that, the businesses, the city employees, especially the DPW, Devin, Dory, Shirley, Megan. They just did a wonderful job getting all the signs out, getting the luminaries lit in all that wind. And it was just a really great event. It brought our community together, I think, with several hundred people uptown. So thank you to everyone who helped with that. As a city, we did get a letter from John Mullenar, our congressman, the House of Representatives. He's just sending a letter dated December 3rd. "I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate you," meaning me, the mayor, "and your team on receiving two grants from the United States Department of Agriculture to replace a patrol vehicle as well as purchase of a subcompact tractor. These additions will be of much value to Perry and its residents. I applaud your commitment and dedication to enhancing safety in your community. Again, congratulations. Thank you for your service to the people of Perry. If I may ever be of assistance in the future, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, John Mullenar." So we'll keep that in mind. Thank you, John. I just wanted to make sure that all the council members did receive a copy of that citywide mailing that is going out with Shirley's mailing to all the businesses, and you guys all signed that. The other thing I just wanted to bring to your attention, if you weren't aware of it, was just the spirit of Christmas, the spirit of giving that I saw in our city employees over the last couple of weeks. In the past, they have all bought gifts for each other or done some sort of secret Santa drawing or something where they were gifting each other. But this year, in the genuine spirit of Christmas and giving from the heart, many of those city of Perry employees donated money instead of purchasing gifts for each other and bought gifts for a family that they don't even know. They got the name from a reliable source and went out and bought gifts for that family and then delivered them to the source church. And those were given to that family today. And I understand that they were very grateful for that. So I just wanted to say what a giving and generous group of people we have here at the city of Perry. And I think that's all of my reports. So how about committee reports?
Just a very brief one from the Business and Affairs and Technology Committee. You and me talked a lot in the past about our new website that we've got coming. Stay tuned, it's coming. At this point in time, we've set a target date to launch to the public of January 18th. We're in final stages, back and forth with some work here by the city staff as well as shoemakers to do some vital cleanup. I'll get a copy of link, actually, for all of you that may not have seen it, to get a chance to take a look at it and give us any feedback. We believe that between the work that Devin, Dory really put a lot of time into it, as well as Sue's input and some from me, that I think we've got to significantly improve and streamline website that we'll be turning out to the public. I guess a target for the 18th of next one. Comments, questions?
I think it's great. I looked... I did the link, and it's 100% better than what it was.
Yeah, it's a good looking page. I agree. Everybody that was involved did a great job. Really is.
I'm very pleased. I'm very excited about it. Once it goes live, we'll see how that goes, but I think it's great, too. Any other committee reports?
I'll mention in the perks and rags of Parks and Property, I'm going to try to install our free sled library, have it all assembled, have it designed, everything. Actually have three sleds to put in it. So anybody in the community has sleds in our garbage, they gently use, be happy to drop them off into our station or library.
That would lead me to say that the Events Committee is sponsoring a snow sculpture contest that will go on in that area at the sledding hill, but down in the field where the ball field is in that space in between for the month of January in anticipation of snow sometime in there. So whoever wants to enter will come into the City Hall, see Shirley. She'll give them a stick with a number on it, and they'll fill out a form with their contact information, and then they'll put that stick at their snow sculpture. And then, in the brief few days when it's there and not melted, we'll judge that. But then we'll judge the rest of them throughout the month. Everyone that participates will get a gift and will have prizes for first, second, and third place. Any other committees? Okay. Moving on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move to approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Larry has made the motion of Bob, seconded, to approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any items under old business. Under new business, we have heard Megan's explanation of the city audit, but next on our agenda is possible approval of that 2020/21 city audit. Is there any other discussion, counsel, I have, or any questions that you've thought of that you'd like to entertain at this time?
I move that we accept the 2020/21 city audit as presented by Megan Galbreth, City Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved by Mike and seconded by Steve to accept the 2020/21 city audit as presented by Megan Galbreth, Treasurer. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is an appointment. And that appointment will actually take effect January 1. When I contacted Dick Lewis, who has been a member of the Planning Commission for several years, he did not want to continue to serve, and his term is due to expire in January. So I'm sure that counsel would like me to write him a note of thanks and appreciation for his service. But I would like to, with counsel's approval, then appoint Mary Plowin in that position. She stepped forward when Mrs. Sanford passed and wanted to serve at that time, but we had already filled that spot. So I asked her if she still wanted to, and she was very excited to do that. So I would like, with your approval, to appoint her to the Planning Commission.
I move to approve the marriage appointment of Mary Plowin to the Planning Commission effective January 1, 2022, for a term expiring January of 2025.
There's a motion by Bob, seconded by Larry, to approve the appointment of Mary Plowin to the Planning Commission for the term as described. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have next on our new business agenda, possible approval of a chair. It's called a body-built chair. This was a chair for one of our employees in the office who has a physical need for Any questions about that? Devin might be able to field those, but I think you all have a copy of that bill.
Yeah. That's all. I'm sure I have. I'm... And I did research, so they are not cheap.
Yeah, I didn't see that one cheaper anywhere else.
Is there just a throw it out? Did we look into, or is it possibly a refurbished one?
DBI always tries to get us actually model ones, so we'll get it cheaper so that they go out and give that. They actually had a third party to get this one because it is specific. We did have a doctor come in. Can you say that name, ergo? Or... What is it?
Orthopedic?
No, orthonomic.
Oh.
Ergonomic.
Ergonomic. Ergonomic, yeah. Because I can never speak that. I wasn't sure what word you were looking for. Yes, thank you, Mike.
So the mayor had asked that I thoroughly look into this employee's overall, and through Sparrow, the city is where we go through our medical firm employees, came up and evaluated. So this was the recommendation. Actually, this doctor talked directly to DBI and specified what should be in this situation. And so, yes. And I will... I am going to share that the employee is very uncomfortable with this, but does appreciate and can see the difference because they were... DBI always lets us sample anywhere from a week to a month sometimes before we purchase.
She's not uncomfortable with the chair. She's uncomfortable with the fact that the city purchased the chair.
Sorry, did I say that wrong? I just wanted to... So anyways, I've assured the employee that, you know, this is what we are supposed to do. This is our job.
I have several years' old experience with DBI, and they always seem to do their best to accommodate and do the right thing for you.
Makes a lot more sense knowing that's where medical need... After coming across this.
I move that we approve the purchase of one new body-built chair from DBI Business Interiors at a total cost not to exceed $1,908.90.
Second.
It's a motion from Steve, seconded by Larry, that we approve this purchase. As read, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we can move on to the copy of the email that I sent to all of you from Dr. David Mica. He has purchased the building on the corner of Main Street and Second Street on the northeast corner. He's going to be rehabbing that building somewhat and tearing down the east end of it because it's not in as good a shape as the rest of the building. And in that, he called and asked me if the city would be interested in purchasing what will become an empty space for parking. I told him if he wanted to put a proposal together, I'd be happy to have counsel look at it. So he did just that, and I think you all have copies of that. So we are open for discussion concerning your thoughts.
So half this and half the building he's removing?
No, it's probably... Well, if you're behind the building, there's kind of a jut out, and it's right even with that. That wooden part of the building was added on, and that's why it juts out. So it's, I'd say, maybe a quarter of the building. I talked to John Souter and asked him to go look at it, and he came back and said to me, "We might get four parking places, but if one of them was handicapped, it'd be probably three parking places." I don't know where this reference to upwards of eight additional parking spaces comes from. I mean, it's just not there. John addressed the fact that the alley's right there, so you've got to have space to, you know, turn around.
Yeah, you can't park in the alley.
You can't have your car poking out in the alley, and you can't just back out into the... I mean, there's...
I'm curious how the value was assessed, too.
I don't think it was. I think it's just...
Well, not necessarily.
I think he just pulled that out of the air somewhere. I just... I can't even... I could hardly swallow after I read that. I mean, I was in real estate for 22 years in this area, and I know values have gone up in the last few years, but that's...
And empty lot that can't be built on? I don't think it's worth that.
I don't either.
But I don't know. That's not my expertise.
Not mine either. Why did the man, the first quarter footage for a parking lot, just goes tilt for me?
Correct.
Especially if they're not in dirt, we're going to have to still undercut that, put in stone.
Asphalt.
Base, and then asphalt and strike that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
For three spots, maybe four.
Right. About equal to what he's saying, the value, to do what's correct. Steve just described.
Yeah. I agree. I absolutely agree. And I said to him on the phone, "Why don't you keep that for your employees' parking? Because then you could put signs on it and say parking for this business only and know that you've got those sites for your employees." that you've got those sites for your employees. He said, well, no, we're not there every day and it just seemed like it would be a better use if it was public parking. So he doesn't have to put the signs up, I guess. But, you know, I asked John again for input and he said, truly, Sue, the only reason I can see that they would even want to sell it, other than the money based on their asking price, is that they wouldn't have to clear the snow off of it. They wouldn't have to clean it. They wouldn't have to maintain it. And I just don't think that this price that he's asking is even in the ballpark of reality.
No.
How would you like me to respond then to this? Because he does say if we have questions, we can, you know, take those to him. If we want to negotiate, we can do that, but I think we're just too far apart to even...
Yeah.
No, I can't think.
Yeah, yeah. That's a lot of money.
Not for people's spaces.
I can respond that, you know, we recognize we've got limited parking within the city, particularly downtown area. However, the city's not in a position to consider, you know, this much money for, you know, premium parking of a few spots or the premium cost of a few slots.
We wouldn't return our investment. It's not...
It would likely turn into employee parking.
We're not going to spend that kind of money for the church and the water plant going down the other way.
Yeah, it's tight back in that area, you know, at best.
Okay, I will let him know that council's feeling that the price is just isn't justified for the space and what we would have to do to improve it and so forth and so on. Any other thoughts? You want me to plug in there?
No.
If there's no other discussion concerning that topic, then we'll move to our second public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Come forward, just tell us who you are and you have five minutes to share with us.
Okay. Hey, I'm Janice Hicks. I live at 5290 Second Street Apartment 19, Washington Square Apartments. And it's funny, I had a dream about this, that business being a parking lot and we do need really good new doctors in this town. But my thought was, if I can make a comment on it, why doesn't he turn that into two businesses and forget about parking? They'll park, his patients will park somewhere and then he can run out that part, half of it, if he face it towards the south and revamp it that way where it's two offices, that he could rent out that office for maybe another doctor or dentist, not dentist because they don't need that. But anyways, back to what I'm here for, I've been talking to several people, including the mayor's...
Yes, Janice, nice to meet you.
Honorable Sue Hammond. First time I met you in person. It was very nice to talk to you on the phone. So I had a problem. I'm not from here, so I'm not used to having everybody downtown at certain holidays and stuff like that. And I do have to turn on Second Street to get down to where I live. So when I was coming back from Dollar General getting some Christmas gifts, wrapping paper and stuff, I went, I was going south, going to turn left on the, on the Second Street there and your lights weren't on yet, your streetlights. So it was quite dark and all of a sudden I see all these people, like just mad, I mean, just like, like a parade. And so I got in the middle lane, stopped, put my turn signal on prior to getting there and I looked down the road and there was a car coming at me and I, you know, and I look over there and they're standing at the corner. So then I look back to make sure that this, whoever the car is, isn't traveling so fast that I'm going to end up getting hit. So I turned and they're in the middle of the road, about six, seven people. And I had just, actually, I'd already, see, I looked there, looked there, start to turn, I might almost into the walkway there and they're, I look and they're right there and I'm thinking, oh my God, you know, I could have hit these people. So I honk the phone, or honk the, the, I'm sorry, honk the horn and they look at me like, why are you honking the horn at us? We have a right to walk. Yeah, you do, hon, but I'm going to hit, I got a black Impella and I'm going to be in the, I'm in the highway right now. So I'm going to be smashed into, probably. And so anyways, I honked it again and they backed off. Then they comprehended what was going on, you know, and so then they backed away, the whole family, there was nobody on the other side walking. And so then I made my left-hand turn, nobody was hurt and I wasn't, I was shook up a little bit, but anyways, I just think that there should be a stoplight there, like a traffic light and it would slow down. It's scary to live that, I mean, that close to a highway, even though the speed limit has been changed to a lower speed now. But when I go to go out of there, also, there's so many trucks and you talk about parking, that church parks on an angle, big old trucks with big old tow hitches and you can't get two cars down that road hardly. So anyways, then you go to turn left and you've got all these trucks parked at, by the diner or somewhere and you can't see beyond those trucks to see if there's trucks coming. And it's like, that's why I think a traffic light might help. So I've talked to several people about it and I did talk to Steve, the traffic engineer, because they all said, that's M.DOT, it's not US. So I called M.DOT. And Steve, the traffic engineer in Davison, he agreed and he said he'd be glad to do a study and, but he's, and then Devin, she told me today that they've already done a study about 10 years ago and he told me the criteria they look for and the third one was a crash, how many crashes happen there? And there hasn't been that many, I don't believe. And she, and Devin didn't think there had been either. So that's why they couldn't, 10 years ago, get a traffic light there. And I told him that. I said, the only, you know, the train, there's a cross and flowers over there, so somebody must have been hit by a train or something at one time. But I said, I just think it would be a good idea. And then he says, I said, well, what about the stop and go signs for pedestrians? He said, that comes with, the whole cost to it. I mean, I said, what does it cost? He says, $200,000. And I said, for one traffic light? And he said, yep. And he said, but the federal, if we could prove that it's needed, he said, I believe it's needed because I'm sure you've got about 60,000 to 100,000 trucks coming up and down that road every day, about probably cars and trucks. And, but he said, as far as the crash part, they'll look at that, too. But he said, you could do, and he said, if it's approved, then the only thing is you got to find out whether the city or the county pays for the electricity and it's not going to be much to light that light, but you have to find that out. And I called Chris Cameron yesterday and I, my cell phone ran out a minute, so it cut out and I've called him back a couple of times, but he hasn't answered the phone. And then, what's his name, Steve said, if you don't get that, and he said, you have to, the council and the mayor have to initiate this, you know, so let them know what, you know, that they, if they want it, fine, then they initiate it and then he will also tell you all this stuff when you call him or have a meeting with his or something. But he, I said, well, what about the lighting? I said, if the lighting, he said, yeah, they should, that should be on a timer. Somebody at your office should know that it's probably set still for summer. So that, that would help. And then he said, if you don't, if they don't get that, or it's not approved by the federal government, that will be paying the whole bill for it if it's approved. He said, then maybe just a light, a bigger light for that intersection would help. I said, what about a flashing light? Nope. He said, that, no, don't, you can't do a flashing light. That's another area, whatever. So that's, that's all I was thinking about, you know, if, and why I came to the meeting tonight to tell you that stuff.
We appreciate your stuff, Janice. Really, this will hopefully bring your indications to the council's attention in a better manner than just I could by referring to them as I was going to.
I know, yeah, I didn't know what, I don't know.
I'm glad you were able to come.
All right.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Did you say Second Main?
Second Street in Main, yeah. I live in proportion to school.
I just want to go take a closer look at it after the meeting.
Huh?
I want to go take a closer look at it after the meeting.
Okay, sure. And one more thing, on Second Street, you've got stop signs. When we come out of our place, we can look all the way down to the Main Street, but you have no stop signs on the north and south of Washington. And there's 48 apartments at Cherry Hill and they fly out of there and around that corner, in the same way with visitors from Olive, whatever that place is for a nursing home, they'll just go right on through because there's no stop sign, no yield sign. So I don't, I don't, I think there should, those kids play out there. We can see them from, you know, when we pull out of our drive, I can see what kids are in the street or they're riding a bike or they're walking or they're running across back and forth, but when they come out of Cherry Hill, they can't see that and they just whip around there, you know? They'll even cut in front of us as we're stopped, you know, of course, we're stopped, but it's, the point of it is, they ain't going to stop unless there's a sign there. So that's another thing that I think should be looked at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Have a good night.
Uh huh.
Having heard that public comment, I'll ask if there's any other public comment, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move to any other business to come before council. Hearing none, council discussions and observations?
I'll just reiterate how pleased I was with the turnout at Christmas Fantasy. I was pleasantly surprised where down there, how many families were there and how well-attended the activities were.
Good. I thought it was really nice. I know Santa didn't get done seeing all the kids till nine, so he was three hours visiting with all of them.
That's all they want.
It was, it was great. There were many businesses. I heard feedback from one person that they heard somebody say when they were in Central Pharmacy, they commented, oh wow, I've never been inside here. I didn't realize they had these things for sale. I thought they were just a pharmacy. So just that one place, if that accomplished that for them, that was a great benefit for that business, for people to get in there that are not usually, you know, going inside. So, and I think that's probably true with many of our, many of our businesses. So it was wonderful to see them all cooperate and do this all together. I would just mention, too, in regard to what Janice Hicks had to say, I did ask John about our streetlights and how those are signaled to come on, the ones on Main Street, and they're on a photo sensitive, so when it starts to get dark, the lights come on. So it's not a timer, time per se, it's just based on how dark it gets, then the lights come on. So just so you know that. But I would ask you each maybe to take a look at that around dusk and see what you think if we, you know, want to look at more lighting or having a traffic study or whatever. Consideration to that.
Did I give you the whole number of Steve?
Yes, you did. I wrote it down today. Yep. I have it. Okay. Items for the next agenda? Anybody have anything they'd like to have on there? I would kind of like to ask our two CISA representatives to give us a report of like, of the year, of what's going on this year, what's going on, what the, you know, what is going on with our fire and ambulance. Maybe have them report to us in January at one of the meetings.
I think that's a good idea.
We haven't heard from them, so, well, John kind of does, but he's more focused on county stuff. So I'll ask both of our CISA representatives to plan to be here and give us reports. Any other committees or community places you'd like to hear from that we could plug into one of our meetings? We don't want them all here at the same time, but you can think about that.
I think we have some change, not necessarily in January, but I think we have some changes coming in terms of food bank management for the city that they want to...
Invite them.
In the February, March timeframe.
Sure.
How did the stuff at the Hummer go?
Oh, it went really well.
So it was up there early and there was...
There was hardly any. I was there shortly after 10:00 and there wasn't much in there at all, but Kyle said when he went and picked it up, it was full, up to the front seat, it was stuck.
Good.
We were on that day, so I had a good chance of doing it.
Anything else? If not, 7:45, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Janice, thank you again for coming.
You're welcome.